Are we on?
Michael Reed.
Folks, we are live. Tonight is Monday, September 18th, 2006. Welcome to Athens City Council. It's on or about 7:30 PM. We do have a forum with all members of council present. I am in receipt of a couple of communications. One, I will read to you from the mayor's office regarding ordinance 10106. I have vetoed ordinance 10106, a labor agreement with HAFSMI Local 2403 concerning wages and working conditions. The ordinance was amended by council to include a new Section 7 and Article 4, recognition of union. I consulted with the city law director to determine if the amendment was permissible under Ohio Revised Code. Their research found that ORC Section 4117.10B provides in part that the legislative body must approve or reject the submission as a whole. This section of the ORC has case history in a 1991 decision by the Court of Appeals of Ohio, 7th Appellate District Belmont County. In Judge O'Neill's decision, it is clear that, quote, "The public employer who engages in negotiation is separate and apart from a legislative body such as the city council." Labor negotiations are administrative actions separate and apart from legislative actions. Ohio Revised Code 731.05 provides that the powers of the legislative authority of a city shall be legislative only but shall perform no administrative duties," says Sign Richard Abel, Mayor. I am also in receipt of a letter from Adam J. Baker and Associates, Attorneys at Law, and this is too lengthy to read, but I would synopsize it by saying it is in regards to the Athens County Property Owners Associations, their objections to Athens landlord occupant declaration of compliance and disclosure, and Athens Ordinance 012905. I did speak with a member of the Property Owners Association on the phone at length. I understand he may be here tonight, and I did tell him that I would recognize him under announcements, not announcements, another business, but opportunity for citizens to speak on our agenda, and that it's my understanding that a council, a committee of council will be addressing this possibly next week. So, I'm sorry? Okay. And possibly a little later after, after further action. So, it is an ongoing issue. Are there other communications anyone would like to share? Reports and communications from other elected officials. How about Auditor Hecht first?
Well, the only thing I have tonight is I just want to let everybody know that we are, our audit for 2005 has been released by the state. It's on the state auditor's website, and of course, we are in compliance with no material findings from last year. That's it.
And I am also in receipt of a copy of that that is available in council office for anyone that wishes to review.
Right. We have copies in my office, too, but yes.
Member Phillips?
I just wanted to congratulate the auditor's office. I think that's a really big deal to actually get the report back with no findings and no notes, and it's very shit-shape.
It did, and in a very timely manner. It wasn't always our fault that we were delayed the first year I was in office, but, you know, the deadline to submit and we had to send, we had to send those audits out to a lot of people that we get grants, all our grantors and federal clearinghouses and things like that by September 30th, so.
Great work.
We're well ahead of our deadline this year, I think. We barely made it last year, but we did, but, so, it's a lot better this year, thanks.
And Kathy, as a former treasurer for the city and a veteran of a few of those audits, I would also like to mention that you got rid of several things that had been ongoing for many, many years that kept showing up, some very time-consuming items that finally got taken care of after oh, a good 10, 15 years on a couple of them that I know about. So, good work on that, too.
I didn't realize how long some of them, but yeah, we were glad to clear up some of that and reduce our comments quite a bit.
Yeah, really.
From the first start that I went through when I got in office. It's been a good thing.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Mayor Abel?
Just a couple of items. From a litter control standpoint, I think as you're aware, we've advertised that position. We had 25 to 30 applicants will be going through testing now, et cetera. But since the intent of council clearly was to enforce that, I've overtimeed code, two code officers Saturday and Sunday. The first weekend they were out, last weekend, they issued 36 warnings and 21 tickets. Now, this past weekend, I did one officer each day. I did two the first time. That issued 13 warnings and five tickets, and it's appeared that when people saw they were about to get a ticket, they quickly cleaned it up. All the other five tickets that we issued were second offenses from the previous weekend, so they were $40 tickets. The other item is a reminder to everybody about parking over 24 hours on city streets through the summer. That was maybe 15, 20, 25 tickets being issued. Last week, we issued 97. Would remind that we do have parking available at the fairgrounds. I think it's $65 a quarter. It's a lot cheaper than getting ticketed like that. Those were the items I had in case council, if us council members have questions.
Thank you, Mayor Abel. Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 9306, an ordinance creating the Comprehensive Plan Review Advisory Commission and amending the Athens City Code. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 09306.
Second.
This ordinance came out of the comprehensive planning process. It's one of the recommendations to help ensure that we have ongoing performance measurement and benchmarking. It creates a review advisory commission that will look into how we're going to be able to measure progress as we proceed with the comprehensive plan.
Further comments? Member Wild?
This is with the intent of keeping it a living document, I believe, so we have some feedback on how well we're doing. It's good that we have this in the Athens 2025 comprehensive plan that's going to be rolling forward.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 9306?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. 09406, an ordinance accepting a sign from the King Midget Car Club and expressing the appreciation of the city of Athens, Ohio. Member Flowers?
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 9406.
Second.
Just as you stated, Mr. President, this is an ordinance accepting a sign from the King Midget Car Club, which I believe most members, most members of council are familiar with. They wanted to submit this sign to council as a gift. It's a wooden sign. I believe I submitted photos via email to all council members. It's done, it's at the bureau, and we're not sure exactly as of now where it's going to go up in the city. That's going to still be discussed with the director of the visitor bureau and of course, code in the city. So, it's simply just an ordinance accepting the sign as a gift from the King Midget Car Club. Paul?
A suggestion where to park it temporarily would be at the museum on Court Street since they're having a transportation exposition, so, you know.
Museum on Court Street? And then to your yard?
No, I don't think so. I didn't build King Midgets.
Other comments on ordinance 94? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. 09706, an ordinance authorizing an increase in the authorized expenditure for renovation of the Arts West Community Facility, project number 216. Member Patterson?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt 9706.
Second.
This is an ordinance to just increase the expenditure from capital improvement for Arts West. This expenditure is still within the range of what was raised in terms of the fundraisers, and the purpose of the money at this point is that they are currently building a backstage bathroom, which makes the facility compliant with actors' equity, so that equity actors can perform at Arts West. And so, that was one of the reasons for the importance of that change.
Further comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 9706?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. 09806, an ordinance authorizing a fee for litter control. And then Wild?
I move adoption of 09806.
Second.
Okay, this is an dollar increase to utility billing for the staffing, rather the, I guess the, what's your wages for the litter control officer that we provide staffing for. Essentially, it's a recommendation coming out of the Clean Committee to get a enforcement component within, for litter control, within the city for litter control.
Member Bain?
And I would like to add that we have, we did add a 50 percent, 50 cent increase on the upper levels, and people talked about it and thought it was a good idea because it's always good to have an incentive to recycle, but it only generated about $20,000, not nearly enough. The advantage of the Clean Committee's under, proposal is that it will hit, it will hit everyone equally, and that means that the large entities who are, who may have litter as amongst them will also be charged, as will the others. This one will raise enough for the salary, for benefits, and for transportation.
And uniforms, et cetera.
And uniforms.
Ticket books.
Ticket books. Okay.
Other comments?
I was gonna say, can you just review what the new charge is?
It's basically going to be $1 on all the utility bills. When I say all the utility is, this would be correlating with what you're seeing for, I believe, water taps and recycling bills, unlike there's a, there's actually an inconsistency between that and the garbage bills, and some billing is pooled together in terms of garbage. So, therefore, it will be a little bit, it'll be the entire, everybody who's got a, gets a bill, utility bill, period.
It'll be $1 more.
$1 more.
Okay.
$1 more.
Yes. Part of the, do you want me to go on? Part of the estimated amount to somewhere about $80,000 a year, which is pretty high, but after you've added in everything else, it probably will cover, it'll cover it, and then maybe more, but I suspect our garbage fees will go up next year since there are changes going on with Athens-Hawking's recycling district.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 9806?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 9906, an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 5, 13, and 29. Again, Member Wild?
I move adoption of 09906.
Second.
Okay, this is essentially adding the title, litter control officer, to all sections that the litter control officer will be enforcing. This includes 50203D, Preparation Storage of Litter, 50211, Uncollected Rubbish and Refuse This Nuisance, and I believe another section there, 1307, actually, two more, 130706, Littering of Public Ways, and the net last section would be citations, issuing of citation, 291202. Again, this is recommendations from the Clean Committee in terms of the enforcement aspect of it. We are probably going to get more suggestions from them in terms of the PR and education components, but this will cover a part of it, too, education-wise.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 9906?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10006, an ordinance repealing ordinance 04504 to provide for the spaying and neutering of dogs and cats within the city of Athens. Member Bain?
Mr. President, I move adoption of 01006.
Second.
This ordinance, which we introduced in early August, will repeal 04504, which was an effort to reduce the burden placed on the animal lovers and the Humane Society and other places who were forced to put to death the large numbers of companion animals that are brought into this world by people who don't take care of their obligation with respect to spaying and neutering. Along the way, and I really didn't know much about Petland at the time, Petland started a lawsuit against us, and so I was pretty much ready to go to court on it, but I was advised by various entities who are larger national organizations, it would be good for us to repeal it and start over, and I have to say, I do not have the companion piece to start over, but I definitely think we will repeal 01006 with this, and I hope you'll all vote for it.
There are further comments on 01006? Member Wild?
So, we can anticipate a replacement in time, I assume?
Yes, I'd like to see a replacement. We just haven't gotten it yet.
Okay.
Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Now, ordinances for second reading. 010206, an ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance. Member Sands?
Mr. President, I'd like to move to consider 10206 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
This ordinance has several finance issues in it that require the funds to be available by the end of September. We most likely won't have a meeting before that time.
Further comments on suspension of the rules only? All those in favor of suspension of the rules for ordinance 10206?
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 10206.
Second.
This ordinance, if you have a copy in front of you, is a rather large-looking ordinance, but it doesn't do a whole lot. There's, there's almost a page full of movement of some funds, anywhere from $100 to $15,000 within various funds within the city for their share of the city's workers' compensation payment for the second half of the year. These funds have, these, this payment has already been made, so we need to reimburse these funds for the, or move this money around so that the funds will have it to go to replace that money. There's also a small payment of $143 for an interest on a loan that we overlooked last $33,000 from the Issue 2 funds from maybe three years ago that were, were not utilized in a project, and we're moving these into the Street Rehab Fund. About $30,000 from the General Fund of the Auditor's Office to pay for some training costs and to pay for some temporary employees, which they've been forced to hire for several positions they have open now, and approximately $5,000 from the Underage Drinkers Fund to help pay for some overtime for officers for the Halloween weekend.
Further comments on ordinance 102? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Now, ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 10406, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a utility easement with the Hawking Valley Bank. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, this ordinance does exactly what it says. There's a drawing attached to it that shows where the utility easement is, that work has already actually been done, so we'll just be allowing those utilities to be there.
Other comments? Ordinance 10506, an ordinance granting variances from the Athens City subdivision regulations for property located at 78 and 80 Hudson Avenue to allow a minor lot split. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, this ordinance grants some variances. This is down at the end of Hudson Avenue. It's currently, there are two primary structures, there are two houses there already. There were some issues with the location of the lot line between the houses. This moves the lot line so that it isn't encroaching on, on either of the houses, and the variances are for the, the lots are both narrower than our, our code currently allows and have a smaller lot size, and the side setbacks where the new lot line will be, require variances. But as I said, these are existing houses, and they're relatively consistent with the other lots in that neighborhood.
Further comments? Ordinance 10606, an ordinance granting variances from the Athens City subdivision regulations to Stephen Abdella and property located outside the corporate limits but within the three-mile jurisdiction to allow a minor lot split. Again, Member Phillips?
Mr. President, members of council, this was brought to my attention after our committee meeting. We do have a recommendation from the Planning Commission to grant these variances. This is in the plains, and the drawing is attached. The property owner is basically wanted to provide an easement to the rear of the property, and at the recommendation of the Planning Commission, decided to actually do a lot split so that there's a driveway that has its own road frontage rather than having an easement across the remainder of the property. So, the variances are regarding the lot size. It's going to be slightly smaller than the 20,000 square feet, which is required where there is no curb and gutter, and...
Member Phillips? I was, had a note that there may be need for a suspension. I'm sorry, then please go on.
Okay. And the lot frontage is only 30 feet where 90 feet is the permitted minimum. That's only going to be used for a driveway to access that, that back lot. And the residual property is again going to have a slightly smaller overall square footage, 18,474 instead of 20,000, and the lot frontage will be slightly smaller than the, the 90-foot permitted minimum.
Other comments? Member Wild?
So, is there something built on this already? Is that what we're hearing, or no?
I think that there's a house on the current, on the front lot, and this is going to, is proposed to be for storage units in the back, but Mayor Abel may have more details about this. This just came from...
Nothing has been constructed yet.
Okay.
Okay.
And it...
Nothing's been what?
I'm sorry.
Constructed, yeah.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? Ordinance 10706, an ordinance repealing ordinance 02606 to extend the tax abatement program in the community reinvestment area for a period of five years. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, we considered this tax abatement program fairly recently, and we extended the abatement period for another five years, and then we received information from Ohio Department of Development that that was only allowed to be extended twice. So, we need to repeal this. This is the tax abatement that is in the Uptown area where property owners that do renovations can actually receive an abatement on the value of the improvements if they bring it, have the, what is it?
Community redesign.
Redesign.
I always screw that up. What is it?
Community design.
Community design.
Would review them, to bring them into some consistency with the, the look and feel of the Uptown area. So, it's a fairly minor program, but we really didn't have the authority to extend it again. So, we have to repeal it at this time.
Other comments? Number Wild?
Do we have a lot of takers on this in the past couple of years? I didn't think so. Have we?
Not very many. I mean, when the Barron's Building was done, that was under that. The Hawking Valley Bank restoration was probably the most recent of them.
Okay.
And Community Design, I believe, has, they do, they're a nonprofit, and they will probably continue to work with Uptown businesses. This wasn't the only thing they were doing.
Right.
Other comments? 010806, an ordinance designating the University of State's annexation area as Ward 1 and declaring an emergency. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, I move that we consider 010806 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is that we will be adding this area to the first ward, and the Board of Elections has requested that we do that in time, that the people who live there will be able to vote since they're now in the city limits.
Other comments? Member Flowers?
I have just a question, or comment, I guess. Do we have to decide what precinct it's going to be in, just the ward that it's going to be in?
I think they do the precinct. No, they don't. We do the precinct.
Board of Elections.
They do the precincts. We just do the wards. They do precincts.
Okay. Other comments? All those in favor of considering 010806 under suspension of council rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt 010806.
Second.
This ordinance designates University Estates, the newly annexed area, as being part of the first ward. When we discussed it in committee, that seemed logical since it's pretty much contiguous with the existing first ward. So, Paul is going to get to represent the, the couple of folks who live there, and then as more people move in, when the city goes through redistricting, it'll be based on population. So, it may cause a shift in the lines, but we will continue to have four wards.
Oh, you're like the land baron now, aren't you? It's like taking on the King Ranch or something. Member Wild?
This must be irony.
Oh, it's rich irony.
I guess I'll do my best to represent them. I went up there, was kind of surprised at how my houses are built and occupy. I was appalled at the quality of the roads. It's going to be very hard to say, for the rest of the city, to pay for the roads if they're not, if they have to be rebuilt in the next 15 years or so.
Oh, it'll never take that long.
I don't think so either.
Member Bain and I went for a drive up through there to look at it, so I am more than acutely aware, and some of them are really concerning.
I am concerned about that. So, there you are.
Luckily, you're in a great committee.
Congratulations. You just took on 831 acres, I believe, in the Ward 1.
That means I have a bunch of deer to have to vote for.
Further comments? I think we are up to adopting at this point, are we not? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 10806?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 10906, an ordinance to rezone the landmark properties on Kurt Street from an M-zone into 2 and R3 zone. Member Phillips?
Mr. President, this ordinance does exactly what the title says. We have a recommendation from the Planning Commission. This was also something that has been brought up in the comprehensive planning process and in the Mill Street area planning process, that, that M-zone in the middle of such a residential area is kind of out of place, so we will actually be rezoning that to an R3.
Other comments? Ordinance 11006, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contract for repairs to water well. Number 19A. Member Bain?
Mr. President, this time under the honoring the crest of Ray Hazlitt, I'd like to move to consider 011006 under suspension of the rules.
Second.
Motion in a second to consider 11006 under suspension. Reason for the suspension?
He states that the city could have used the capacity to deal with the recent break.
Further comments on suspension only? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 11006?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of 011006.
Second.
Motion in a second. Further comments?
No.
No comments?
Whoa. Oh, you want me to just?
Yeah.
I want you to just...
Just a little bit.
You can talk.
I don't ask for a lot.
Oh, okay. We have a water well that needs to be redone. It's cheaper to redo a water well, $33,000, than to drill a new one, and that's why we're doing it.
Member Wild?
To reiterate what you said, this well has not been functioning. It's been fallow. May as well get it started again. It's not a heavy producer, but we're in this need, yes.
Other comments? Member Sands?
A comment and a question. The mayor indicated at committee meeting that this well, as you said, Paul, was not a heavy producer. It was, it was often utilized in emergencies such as we had last week with the water break. Any question? Did we discover where it's located?
It is in the armpit.
It is.
By the number.
Are there other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 11006?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 11106, an ordinance amending the 2006 appropriation ordinance. Member Wild?
Okay, this is appropriation ordinance where we move some money around. Okay, this is appropriation ordinance where we move some money around. Section one essentially covers two different areas, tourism fund, it's going from twenty to twelve, one twenty, fourteen thousand. This is for, if I understand correctly, increase, anticipating an increased cost for the garbage and lease, or rather, police trash pickup and solid waste for the upcoming Halloween, so we're moving money for that. There's also a general fund there, oh one oh, one oh one, two oh seven. If I understand it correctly, this is going from, this is overtime pay for the police, for the past tense, if I got this correct. Is that correct, Rick?
Overtime and command pay.
Okay, and this is overtime what?
Command pay.
Okay. So this covers the overtime that's been generated within, for the past year. Section two, of course, is a, is moving some of the same stuff around. It also includes the money coming out of the tourism fund for the same stuff, if I reading it correctly, the same overtime pay and increased cost. So this is mostly police appropriation or enforcement or services, city services.
Other?
Did I miss something? Jim?
There's the eighteen thousand for parking.
Eighteen thousand, oh yes, okay, yes. Okay, and that's for the cost of the increased tickets that we've been generating. We've contracted out for the tickets to have them chase down, the parking tickets are now being chased down by a third party, and they're doing so well that they're charging us more.
But the positive side of that is.
We're getting more too, in general, yes. We get, we get the major cut, they get a little cut, and we thought they'd be doing not as well as we thought, so they're doing much better. So pay your parking tickets on time.
Member Bishop.
Okay, I just have a question. Some of this is for Halloween, right, and some of it is not, and we will be probably having to appropriate more for Halloween, right? This is just a piece of it, is it? Mayor Abel?
I'm not, I'm not anticipating any more to be appropriated for Halloween. We already had some appropriated in the tourism fund, this additional fourteen, and with what you earlier approved of the judge transferring money to do the jail in the county courthouse using Hocking Correctional for the regional jail people who are off duty, should be adequate to meet what we currently have as projected expenditures for outside of the payment of overtime for all of our officers who will be working, which Paul's taking care of in another section of this.
Member Bain.
And I don't see that we're creating a special area to take in money. Is that going to happen sometime soon? You know, like the Halloween slush fund?
Slush fund is such a harsh.
No, it's such a slushy term. So we can put money into it from?
Yeah, we can always recede into the general fund unless council has designated something else, and part of, I think, the auditor's office recommendation on that was because since these were donations, whereas in the tourism fund, it's all really the collection of the tax on, but bed tax in the hotels, in motels, that it would be cleaner not to mix that, just leave it in the general fund. We have plenty of expenses in the general fund for Halloween that can do it, we can, on paper, we know what it is and how much it is.
We can always track it.
Well, I, yeah, I guess that's what I would like to see, because that was the intent last time, that we would know how much the efforts of Carolyn Vojinka and other people are accomplishing.
That can be done without creating a fund. Creating a fund is a real process.
Well, some, well, something, I mean, that's what we left with that, I don't see anything here, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we need to keep track, that's a good point.
And that's certainly commendable.
Right, we, that type, creating that type of fund would probably have to be approved by the state, as opposed to funds that are by law created under the ORC. But we did create an account line in the general fund two years ago when we first started collecting vendor fees, the percentage, and we have, have an account line already for Halloween receipts. We can change it to Halloween receipts and donations, or whatever you want to do, and we can create new account lines rather than a new fund to track that.
Well, that's where we left it last time, so I just want to make sure that we have that capacity.
And, I'm sorry, do we need to amend this ordinance, or is that just something the auditor's office will do to?
No, we can, we can do that.
Fund has a whole different meaning legally than tracking something that we are able. I'm certain that the auditor's office can.
Right, you know.
Provide an accounting to council any way you wish to look at it. And that can be done without legislative action.
Right.
Thank you. Other comments on oh one eleven oh six? Oh one twelve oh six, an ordinance amending ordinance oh thirty oh six, authorizing construction of roadway curbs and sidewalk, sidewalks, ramps, pardon me, in the vicinity of the middle school project number two fourteen. Member Flowers?
Mr. President, I move we consider ordinance one twelve oh six under suspension of the rules.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is, I too am in communication from the city service safety director, Ray Hazlitt, that, one, the work is already done on this project, and in order to process the issue-two funds, we must show our portion in the paperwork, so in turn, we would need to pass this ordinance.
Other comments? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance one twelve oh six?
Aye.
Those opposed? Rules are suspended.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance one twelve oh six.
Second.
You have a second.
For the reasons just stated.
Further comments? Number Wild.
Okay, so this is an increase in the cost.
Yeah, it's a twelve thousand dollar increase.
Okay. Because of developed, things found on site while we were building, or rather, paving?
I think that that was the ideas, that there was additional work involved.
Change order kind of things? Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance one twelve oh six?
Aye.
Opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance one thirteen oh six, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a lease agreement with the Athens County Agricultural Society and declaring an emergency. Member Flowers?
Mr. President, I move we consider ordinance one thirteen oh six under suspension of the rules. The reason for the suspension is, we have already begun leasing these parking spots as in communication from the mayor, so it's important that obviously we pass this ordinance as well.
Other comments? All those in favor of suspension of the rules on ordinance one thirteen oh six?
Aye.
Opposed? Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance one thirteen oh six.
Second.
As all council members are aware, we are in receipt of the lease agreement. I will just highlight briefly some of the, well, some of the highlights that we discussed last week in committees on the lease agreement with the fairgrounds for the parking. One of the main changes was the percentage, forty-five percent of the fair board, forty-five percent of the city, and then ten percent will go to pay back the sidewalk construction, and this is a five-year agreement.
Further comments? Number Wild.
I see the sidewalk's been paved already, it's looking nice, actually. It's not finished, I know, but it looks very nice and new and wider.
One rough, West Union Street, I was gonna say. Other comments? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance one thirteen oh six?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has been adopted. Now for resolutions for second reading. R oh eight oh six, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county officer. Member Sands, I've been informed by the clerk that we need to consider this under suspension of council rules.
Mr. President, I was going to ask you to do that very thing. I'd like to consider resolution oh eight oh six under suspension of the rule.
Second.
This, this resolution came to us just before last meeting, and it has a required return date to the county auditor's office of the end of September, so we need to pass it now or have a special meeting.
All those in favor of suspending the rules for resolution oh eight oh six?
Aye.
Those opposed? The rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of resolution oh eight oh six.
Second.
This is an ordinance that comes to us from the county auditor's office with her office's estimate of the tax revenue we will receive for land that's in the townships that can, that make up the city of Athens. Athens township taxes would yield about six hundred forty thousand dollars, taxes from Canaan Township, about forty thousand dollars, for a total of about six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And we are obliged to say, yes, we accept this, or no, we don't, and there's no negotiation, it's aye or nay. Member Phillips had a very cogent comment that she made last week, and I see her hand up again. You want to point that out?
I actually had a question this week, but what I pointed out last time we talked about this is that the changes the General Assembly made in personal tangible property is going to cause some significant losses to us over the next several years. But my question is whether this estimate includes the newly annexed land that's coming into the city limits, or whether we'll see that the next time we go through this resolution, and I wondered if the mayor knows.
It's triggered, I would assume that it does not, because the valuation of the land change is usually done in October of each year, and it's done upon the plating of the subdivision, and there was no real basis of sales as of October last year, so there may be something in the works, but I can't say yes or no, but my guess is it would probably go up from that standpoint, and this is all inside village, so it would be actual more money to the city.
So that'll, we'll start seeing that progressively as, as more is out there. But the, the personal tangible property tax is taxed on equipment and inventory that businesses and utilities have, and that's being rapidly phased out by our legislature.
Other comments on resolution oh eight oh six? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution?
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution has been adopted. Announcements and other business. Committee meetings, number Wild.
I'd like to have environment committee meeting.
Neutrification committee.
Communication?
City services, fire alarms, maybe.
Mr. President, probably finance and personnel, you might notice we talked about a, an ordinance requested by the treasurer in committee last time, and it was deemed that it needed some more work, so maybe we'll talk about it again.
Arts and recreation for Stroud Run agreement.
Transportation or bicycles now, maybe more.
What did you say, bicycles?
About all of them.
Bicycles what?
Bicycles, gender.
Maybe more.
I got a phone call.
Okay.
Same here.
Yeah. Same phone call.
About?
About bicycling in the city.
And danger?
Mm-hmm.
Danger to individual health.
Right, citations.
Okay.
Okay, Carol, do you want to add just a report on Halloween? Or not?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Is there a way of slowing down the number of emails at all?
Yes, in November, they'll be slow.
Other business for the council. Now for an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and any city services that have not been covered on tonight's agenda you wish to speak on. Is there anyone that would like to address council? Seeing none and having addressed all items on our agenda, we stand adjourned.